Good, okay. Good morning, everyone. Today's Thursday, March tenth, 2022, and we're here for a work session. And as always, we're going to start with the pledge allegiance. And Bob, can you please take the lead?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Bob. And today we have two announcements this morning. At first, I want to remind residents that there are free rapid COVID-19 test kits available to pick up at the front desk and at the senior center in Aquabank during the hours of nine and three P. M. Uh, yeah, three P. M. Next, a reminder to all our seniors that the senior center offers a variety of services, including daily lunches that are served in the dining room at the senior center in Aquabank, free weekly rides to your local supermarket, up to two rides for doctor's appointments on a monthly basis based on availability, and many other activities such as bingo and other games and holiday lunches. And you can call six three one seven two seven thirty two hundred, extension two nine zero for further details. And we're going to move on to the first agenda item, which is the January, February police report. And Chief?
Okay, sure. We'll do it next.
Good morning.
Good morning, Chief.
Hopefully, everyone got copies of the reports.
Yes, we do.
Email now. I think January's came last month, and I forgot February is this week, I think. So basically, they're both the same status quo. Our crime numbers are actually, I say, the same as they were last year, but they're actually down just a slight bit. So if you look at that as far as percentages, I don't like to look at that as far as percentages because we're dealing with small numbers. And when you deal with small numbers, percentages can kind of look different than they should be, so.
Yeah, Chief, I know exactly what you're talking about. So, for example, if you have one homicide in one year, and the next year you have two homicides, you have a hundred percent increase. And sometimes, you know, it looks good, you know, in the newspapers and people say this, or fourteen percent, or twenty percent, fifty percent, a hundred percent. But we have to take that into account.
Exactly.
We're dealing with small numbers, and any changes is going to look like it's more exaggerated than it really is.
So all other numbers rebounded nicely, all rebounding nicely, back to where they should be. Some were down, though. Domestic incidents, which is good, was down. And I think revenue was down, but that's just because of billing purposes. And as I said before, criminal incidents were actually down, but ever so slightly. Summons are way up. You can see January, seven hundred and twenty-six were written and eight hundred and sixty in February. So that's also good numbers.
And we also have the UCR crimes that are down.
Yes, UCR crimes are down, even smaller numbers than the criminal incident numbers that look at, because criminal incidents, we look at everything in the police department. UCR focuses on just so many violent crimes. I think it's four violent crimes and four property crimes, right?
So it's called the Uniform Crime Report, for those that don't know. It's the FBI method of collecting stats, and it's a practice across the entire nation. And the departments themselves report their stats to the FBI, and then the FBI compiles their UCR report. It's a yearly report.
And hopefully, that'll change this year. Maybe we're supposed to move to Nibers, which is incident-based reporting instead of uniform crime reporting. We're still waiting on the county to, they're implementing the software to do that. We're still waiting to get onto that program.
And that's going to be a whole different approach. And I guess we'll better inform the public once it's, we may have a work session possibly, or just inform the public through an announcement. It's a different mythology, and it looks at things from a global perspective as opposed to just zeroing in on your violent crimes and death crimes. And so that's, that's for another day as soon as we get that, possibly next year, right?
Yep.
Chief, just one thing on personnel. How are we doing with numbers? And I know Stromsky's retiring shortly.
Yes. So currently, we're down one. So we're at eighty-seven instead of eighty-eight. Hopefully, we'll be replacing that person shortly. We're still working. As you know, applicant investigation has to clear all of our candidates. We're still waiting for that process to finish so we know who we can look at to hire. So that should happen shortly.
And Frank, last year, we hired nineteen officers. It was a record. Unlike when people were told what's going on. It was a record, and we eventually have to reassess and see.
But that's just replacing mostly retired police officers. Our numbers are still the same. I'm looking at your noncriminal incidents, and you're responding to a lot more volume of calls.
Calls are, yes, calls definitely are. Criminal incidents were actually down ever so slightly.
So that would show proof that the town is growing, that the police force would need to grow in time as well.
That is, that is, we're doing the analysis on that and see where we are. But that's a budgetary thing that I will be addressing with the chief. But you're correct, the numbers are up, and that's something that we have to address to increase personnel.
Part of my question was just, are there any more retirements that are foreseen?
Stromsky's the only one that so far. I mean, there's other grumblings, but, you know, no one's come to me and said they're retiring, so.
And this is just the way, and I say this because it's also praising you that, you know, it's not, the police aren't just responding to criminal calls. You know, there's a lot of work in needed cases, a lot of things in which you're doing, taking reports outside of criminal. And so the workload seems to be growing.
Right. Calls for service February are like twenty-five hundred calls, so.
Yeah, it's a lot.
It's a lot. And our dispatches do a lot of work. I've been comparing the numbers with other dispatching agencies on the East End, and we do a lot of work, so.
Remember when ten thousand calls a year was a lot?
Yeah, right. It's way back. I started with fifty-seven officers when I came on.
Yeah.
That was how long ago?
Eighty-one.
Don't you have to date yourself, Chief?
Eighteen, eighty-one.
Thanks, Councilman.
Of course, and buggies, of course.
Yeah, you got it.
Thanks, Chief.
Okay.
Thank you, Chief.
Have a good day.
You, too.
All right. Next up, we're going to have Jeff Murphy, our head planner, here to discuss matters surrounding site plan application for one thirty-three dash one thirty-nine Railroad Avenue here in Riverhead.
I'm going to ask the applicant also, Pablo Rodriguez.
Hi. Okay. Good morning, sir.
Good morning.
Morning, everyone. I believe Greg has already distributed staff reports to each of you.
Yes, we do.
So you've seen this application before. This is the former Luz Cabo's
Yes.
building over Riverwood Avenue, across from the train station. The big difference that you've seen from what you previously saw, before, it was going to be a small grocery store. Now, it's going to be a restaurant. So slight difference in what the business plan is going to be. This is going to be for forty-two seats, sit-down restaurant with drainage, lighting, and parking improvements. And Pablo listened to what we said from the last staff report and modified his plan accordingly. And I'll go through that very briefly in the staff report. This property is located at one thirty-three dash one thirty-nine Railroad Avenue, and that's actually the official name of the site plan application. It is located directly across the street from the existing train station. By resolution number twenty twenty-one dash one thirty-eight, that was done in February of last year, the town board has seen lead agency status and issued a negative declaration pursuant to SECRA, and made the following findings. If the existing one-story structure is not listed, nor is it eligible for any state or historic places, the installation of a stormwater management system will contain onsite runoff, and proposed facade improvements will contribute to the revitalization within the Railroad Avenue urban renewal area. As I mentioned, we did change, or the applicant did change the use from a grocery store into a restaurant and forty-two seats. And there's also going to be two ten-by-eight walk-in freezers in the back of the building. Some of the parking, and I'm going to talk about that in a moment, is going to need your sign-off. And we have some issues regarding the building signage and building elevations. There was an issue last year. He had basically a plywood structure connecting the building with the accessory building in the back of the property. He's since removed that, and he's now proposing a six-foot wide canopy to connect the two buildings. As I mentioned, the building facade is one of the issues that we're looking at. It's a unique-looking building. It has gone to the ARB. The ARB would like to see building materials, samples, and colors as well as some details about the proposed awnings. A lot of questions about, because there are a lot of large windows, that they're concerned that these are going to be filled up with illegal signs. I think it's less of an issue for a restaurant than you would for a grocery store. Grocery stores, you have sales, advertisements, things like that. For a restaurant, you typically wouldn't see that sort of thing. So I think the proposed restaurant use may mitigate some of those concerns. The one thing that the ARB did note, however, is that they wanted to see more landscaping in front of the building. This is an existing building. It's already built up to the sidewalk. Unless you take away from the building or cut out, put cutouts in the building, there is no place to put landscaping in front of this building. The applicant did put one street tree at the corner of the property. So the question for the board is, are you okay with that?
Right now, there are, it looks like overgrown, much trees in front of the property right now. Are you replacing them, or what? Proposing to take them down, existing trees?
I believe that it is outside the property limits, but if the plant department, the board, asks us to look into that section of the area that is technically not inside the property line, I guess we can look into.
Front to the sidewalk ones.
If the trees, what we'll do is, we'll do it, yeah, I'll take a look at those with Greg. They want more landscaping out front.
Like, they might be, they might be ripping up your sidewalk, and they might be doing some damage, but it, so I wouldn't have a problem with them being removed, but perhaps replaced with, you know, a more suitable one that's less surface roots or something like that.
So we'll definitely take a look at that.
Yeah, if that's, I'm in favor of trees. I don't know what they're referring to in terms of landscaping.
I always like grass.
No.
Jeff, can you just explain the facade, the design on the front? So you said now, now restaurant, but with the facade that I'm still looking at shows four different shops. So are we leaving all multiple front doors? Is this all one restaurant, everything?
No, no, right now, the building has four tenants, currently has four tenants. We are proposing to combine two of the tenants, the Luz Cabos and previous tenant space, and there's a small retail space on the east side of the property. So they're going to combine that for the new restaurant. There's an existing barber shop at the corner of the building and a taxi dispatch office. So there will be three tenants as per the proposed.
This way the music store used to be, right?
Excuse me?
This way the music store used to be?
I believe, I'm not, I don't know.
I think so, yes. I think so.
I think so.
It's going to be Ninos?
Ninos used to be there, yeah.
Before it went to Main Street, yeah.
Yeah, the property he's talking about, though, is not, it's on the.
No, that used, I know I got a clarinet or something.
Yeah, Ninos, but Ninos was further west.
Oh, okay.
This is, this is where the Luz Cabos was and is, always has been. And those extra shops, and Ninos was further down where it's a, was a stationary store, and you had the old shoe store there, dressers, back in the day. And then Ninos was next to that.
So I'm sorry, so you're leaving this as, this is correct, the facade, is what you're saying?
Yes, the facade, yes. It's, we are going to be showing four exterior doors facing the street because of the restaurant will have two egress from, at the, facing the street. So it's still going to show, like, there will be four spaces, but it's actually going to be three tenant spaces.
Jeff, at one time, there was, wasn't there some type of structure in the back?
There's, there's a, there's a walk-in freezer in the back.
But that wasn't legal, correct?
There is a walk-in freezer in the back.
Oh, it was a freezer?
Yeah. And that's going to be connected to the building.
Permitted use there, right?
Walk-in freezer, yes, that's.
Oh, it was? Okay.
As proposed.
There was an issue with the parapet, too.
I'm getting to that.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. We're going to learn a new word today, too.
Good.
But let's talk about parking first. He did get a waiver from the zoning board for the number of parking stalls, but there are two discretionary actions that you must take. They are proposing four parallel parking stalls along the side property line. Question for the, and it's at the discretion of the reviewing board. So that's one of the decisions that you have to make. The other one is that they are proposing nine-by-twenty-foot double-stripe parking stalls, and that is also discretionary by you, the board.
Is that going to be paved?
Yeah, yes, yes.
It is existing. It is already a paved parking lot, but they're definitely going to redo the existing pavement.
What type of restaurant?
Right now, they are, the owner is looking for potential tenants, but it is not, is not finalized at this point, Judge.
Just, sorry. I was just going to ask, with the, with the building in the back, so you say inside that separate building, that's where your freezer, is that one of them?
Yeah, I mean, we see that quite a bit, and it requires Health Department approval, and it has to be.
That's what I was going to ask. The Health Department's going to allow you to carry food from the freezer through a parking area into the restaurant?
It has to be over covered. That's why they're proposing the canopy. That is the county Health Department requirement has to be covered. It can't be just open air between the two structures. And I've seen that with other restaurants as well. The exterior lighting, they're proposing four thousand degree Kelvin. Our code requires three thousand degrees, so it's a simple change to the site plan. Getting to the building facade with the parapet, this is actually called a crenellated parapet. And if you ever see a castle with the cutouts and the jogs, that's so that the troops can stick their rifles or their bows and arrows out and shoot down the enemy. So that is called a granulated, a granulated parapet. And the ARB and the landmarks want that part of the facade saved because that's part of the historic appearance of the building. And the applicant is proposing to keep that.
And they should.
Yeah, I think that's smart, too.
Yeah.
So that concludes the staff report. They are proposing, if you take a look at Figure Five, all the garbage, they are proposing a new roll-off garbage container. So you're not going to see what you see in this picture. And then the next step is that we're going to be scheduling this for a public hearing.
So there's forty-two seats and there's thirteen parking spaces.
Yep, and they got a variance from the parking, from the zoning board.
Fourteen proposed spaces and twenty required, and so we have a six parking spaces variance that we had last year.
That's it?
Well, if everything goes right with the TOD down there in the future, there'll be plenty of parking.
Yeah, he has.
That won't be an issue. Anything, I've said this to you when you came in the first time, any improvement you make down here is going to be welcome. So I like what I see here, and I appreciate the fact that you're invested in Riverhead and looking to make that area better looking, and as we are as a town and with the CDA, so goodbye to you.
I agree, and I think you'll find some success in your location, especially in the wake of some of the building and
Transit, TOD.
renovation, yeah, renovation that's going on down there.
Got a lot of court people that come out to lunch, walk out, you know, during their lunchtime, and want a place to eat, and that'll do very well for you.
I think the timing's perfect.
And then I do have the material samples. As in my car, I'm going to deliver it to the building part today, so the architecture review board can approve it or have any more additional comments regarding the proposed facade.
Great. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good to see you, Pablo. Best of luck.
Thank you.
And Moby just finished his resolution. I'd like to add it on.
Put it on?
Yeah. Yes.
So I just want to announce that
and it's a certification.
Riverhead Litter Committee is going to be doing an Earth Day cleanup on April twenty-third, eight thirty a.m. to ten thirty a.m. And supplies can be picked up, and the volunteers can register for a location at Riverhead Town Hall at eight thirty on April twenty-third, eight thirty a.m.
Yeah, it's always a good day.
Yeah, we had like, there was like two hundred people last year, so trying to exceed that two hundred. A lot of ghost dumping going around, and we need to clean it up.
Yes, especially Grimace Diggers. Okay, so we're done. We're going to move forward, and thank you, Jeff. And next up, we have our Parks and Recreation Superintendent Ray Coyne to discuss with us matters surrounding possible enhancement to the town beaches sticker system. Good morning, Ray. Can you come up?
Good morning.
How are you, Ashley?
Good, how are you?
Good, thank you.
Hey, how are you?
Hello.
This is the coin. How are you?
We have a copy.
This works very well in Brookhaven.
Yes, it does.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Okay, just to preface this, we've been trying for years to figure out how to get the best system in for the beach stickers. The beach stickers were always a problem for us with all different variations, complaints. We've tried different colors, multiple stickers. People don't like putting stickers on their cars. Then you have the enforcement, you have the nonresidents. So I've challenged our staff for a year or two now, but really challenged them this year to find something with technology to help us get the better of the beach stickers, to make it the best system we can for the residents. My star employee right here found a system that's called Passport. And when she first introduced it to me, I loved it. And we later found out it is in Brookhaven, and Southampton is, look like they're going to adopt it as well. So it is going around, but it's a, it's a great system. I'll have Ashley explain to you how it works, and we'll go from there.
All right. So basically, our system right now is very, we use a software record to purchase our beach stickers, but it's basically us manipulating the system to make it work for beach stickers. They don't actually have something that allows you to do that, so we're making it work for us. So with Passport, it'll be very easy for the customer. All they'll have to do is apply their application online. They'll input their personal information on their own, upload their documents that we request for each permit, whether it be registration, insurance, their proof of residency, their license, and then they submit it. We are immediately notified on our end. We look at the documents and we approve it. Once we approve it, they have a sticker. Now, they don't necessarily have a physical sticker, but our end goal is to not have stickers at all. And basically, you would have a reader, and we could just scan if somebody has a sticker or not. Right now, we have stickers purchased, so we can still use those, and we could always use them if we wanted to, but it's just a easier way to approve their stuff. If we decline it, we can easily message them right through the same system. Your information's wrong, we need blah, 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 and we can have it fixed. The other perk to it is that it, customers won't be charged until we approve it. So right now, you can go on and live wherever you live, input whatever you want, charge or get charged. We still have to approve your documents, but now we have to go through the whole refunding process because they were charged, not realizing that they live in Southampton or wherever they live. So this form that we just gave you is from the company, and they, it's just a few bullet points that will help us explain to you how it will be a better system for us. It's going to minimize costs and maximize time, streamline operations. The customer will input everything, so it'll eliminate a lot of user error on our part. We have people call, give us their information over the phone. Sometimes things get messed up due to not being here or whatever, user error. Now it's on the customer. They're putting everything in. The increased payment security, it'll help minimize the cash that we have off-site at the beach booths, which has been a big thing from the auditors. They're not a huge fan of the kids having the money. So although we will still be able to accept it, it'll just be able to minimize it and have them carrying less stuff. And then, like I said, the end goal would be to remove the need for the physical hang tags at all. They do have a scanning system that we could just scan their registrations right then. People, it'll eliminate people saying that they lost their sticker, or someone stole it, or trying to fraud the system, because we can just check right then and there. The permit technology built for efficiency will spend less time managing stacks of paper and more time serving your customers. If you see us at the end of the season in September managing all the stickers, we have boxes of stickers, have to go through all of them, count them, make sure everything is done correctly and matches for the audit. This will eliminate a lot of time for our staff. We won't have to search through books when someone stole a ticket, or they got a ticket, now they're like, can you find my sticker? And it's just a little bit chaotic. All the documents are approved by the personnel, and it notifies us immediately, so everything's done in real time. I'll know right away if somebody purchases a sticker or submits their application, approve it, they have it. It could be after hours. The clock, the beach closes at six. We can have staff that are working, the park attendants, whatnot, can just be doing this all the time. They'll get notified, just approve it. We won't have, oh, there was no attendant, so I didn't have a sticker. Now, there's no excuse to not have.
Yeah, that's always been a challenge for us because we're closed on the weekends, and when the beaches close up, you got a lot of the residents, I didn't get my sticker yet, but I want to go down and watch the sunset. Well, they can't do that until they have the sticker. But this, as soon as they put it on their computer, it's done. Their car is registered, and they can go to the beach right then and there.
Now, how does code know that the car has or does not have a permit?
Eventually, we'd like to get code involved in this as far as, because they can actually issue stickers. This scanning device can actually issue a sticker right then and there. What we plan on doing is issuing like warnings and telling code, but we'll give code one of the scanners so they can go scan the cars now, or they could just type in their license plate. So they don't have to go look for a sticker, or, oh, I didn't see the sticker. It's all done through.
What would the officer be scanning? Wouldn't it be a sticker?
It's a registration sticker. New York has a scanning portion of it. Yeah, that's what we really like. So the cars come in, boop. You look, all right, you're registered, you come in. Nonresidents can't sneak in anymore. They can't get, you know, a legal sticker, or they can't manipulate the system. There are some that are pretty clever and do it.
You're going to need a fair amount of scanners, so because secta cars are going to need them, the TCOs are going to need them.
We thought like for, we thought just to start would be, we do have the stickers right now. So we can still, if someone comes, our beach tenant, we get four scanners for each beach. We can scan the cars. Oh, I got one. All right, let's slap a sticker on you just to make it transition easy. But from there, if the, if the attendants are scanning or they go to clean the bathrooms and some cars sneak in, they can go around and scan on their time while they're working, call the TCOs, like, we have several cars in here, like, you're going to want to come in, ticket, or we can give warnings to the cars. But the end game would be to combine with the police, like Ray said, they have, and that's the one backend system that, like, other towns are looking at right now, is those things can print tickets to, and it would have to be all integrated, which they're able to do. But we're just looking to do something, do step one, get it going, customers used to it.
Yeah, we wanted to pilot it this season to see how it works, you know, what complaints we get, feedback we get while we have the stickers. So if it works and everybody's on board with it at the end of the season, then we can say, okay, we're going to move forward without the stickers. In the meantime, I will speak to the chief if the town board approves, see if he likes the system. I, you would know the system that you use for tickets. They said.
Yeah, because I see a gap where, you know, you get a call at twelve midnight, everybody's closed, and they say there's four cars at the beach, and people say, well, I have a sticker, and, you know, it's past that time, I can park here. Every officer would have to be equipped, just about every car would have to be equipped.
Oh, yeah, absolutely.
To know that, especially when we're getting the overcrowding during COVID, and that was a disaster.
Well.
So somehow, there has to be a, something you can.
Yeah, but you could also, you, they can use their computers too and just type in the license plate number. So we don't have to purchase the scanners. The scanners are, to me, it's just easier, but it goes by license plate. So if you have the system, which we have, yeah, you just type in license plate number into the system itself and it'll tell you.
So there would be software that would have to be installed for the
It's on the cloud. Everything's on the cloud, so they wouldn't even have to install software.
Yeah. And that's how the original thing was, the license plate, but then they said, oh, you're New York, you have registration right on your window. You can buy the scanner and make it even easier.
Well, the thing I do like about the scanner is if you can print tickets off of it, it's much faster to do tickets than handwriting out the tickets and, and doing that. You just, it's a click of a button and you got the ticket.
And they can even pay on this system, on this cloud-based system. So if you get a ticket, you can pay on the system. Now, there's a specific system the chief uses now. I, I don't, I'm not aware of it. They were, when we spoke to Passport, they're aware of it. Their system could be, integrate with that system.
Now, would this work for four-by-fours on the beach and all your, or the gold, the bronze, all the different ticket sticker levels?
Yeah.
How about when you go to the, I'm just envisioning, go to the end of Creek Road in Wading River, you have your boat ramp parking and everything in there. I don't think there's any wifi or anything in there. So how are you, you're gonna ask police officers to get out of their cars, to go and write down numbers and then go someplace to, how are you gonna check those vehicles down in that area?
No, it's a good question. Most of our areas have the wifi now. I don't know how the, the computers work in the police cars. Like I said, they just have to type in the license plate. So they technically don't have to get out of the car anymore. Right now, they still will have to get out of their cars and look at the stickers, which is on the side of the car. So to me, this is easier for, for the cops because they literally don't have to leave. And then we've had
They would have to go, I mean, that's
Yeah, no, listen.
You go into Jamesport and you've got a hundred cars and the whole lot is full. You can ask police officers to sit there and then it would be a long tedious effort to start entering license plate after license plate. It's like to go down a line to check car after car after car.
Just have the scanner and they can scan through.
Well, that would be our, during our season, that would be the beach tenant. That could leave them for, because at the time, we want the beach tenant to clean, clean the beach, clean the bathrooms, do all this stuff, but we also expect them to sit there the whole time to sell beach stickers. Now they can go, they can scan, they can go clean, they can scan. If they miss some cars, it's fine, they can keep scanning, those people can buy them without the beach tenant there at all.
And if they're sitting there, they scan the cars that comes in.
Yeah, and say, yeah, go ahead or whatnot. But at this time, put the sticker.
Ultimately go to a fully automated system where there are gated responses from whatever stickers?
They can.
Yeah.
They can.
Southampton is looking similar like that. They, they're, this is like their basic, like why don't you start small doing things? But in the end, they do have like gates with cameras that read your license plate and let you in. That's more
That doesn't eliminate the attendant necessarily because they're still there for cleaning and other things, but at least it relieves them from being there for every single car.
And when they leave.
And when they leave.
So, and that's a big thing for a lot of the, the locals is that the beaches get very crowded after hours and some call it a free-for-all. So this would eliminate that, they couldn't get in at any time unless they had the, the light, like the, the license plate was read correctly, they have to be a resident.
Yeah, I, I think that's, you know, critical for, like you say, after hours and, and times where you don't have somebody that's working physically on the premises, so I think that's a great idea.
And right now, it is cost neutral in my budget. It, it, we're gonna, we're negotiating with them now. They gave us a certain price, which is within the budget, we're gonna negotiate more. It is around the same price. We're gonna make it the same price of the, what we purchased the beach stickers for. So there'll be no change in our budget. In fact, we're gonna try to negotiate even further down. That would be our annual. It's a monthly system with them, so if we, anytime we wanted out, we can go out. But we pay them, well, we would, with our system, pay them on an annual basis, but they charge us a certain amount of money per month. And then when I look, I might, I first said to Ashley, I said, it's gonna be tough to afford this. And then when I looked, it's exactly how much our beach stickers, we get allotted for the year. So it will not change our budget at all.
Oh, Ray, I think it's important that you sit down with Ashley and speak to the chief concerning enforcement, because that's the end game, right?
I think the town attorney wants to pipe in on this.
Yeah, no, no, we
Yeah, so the end game is you deal with the tickets, right? But you're gonna be able to remove people that don't belong there and that would be the last leg of this process if we were with the chief.
That's why we wanted to pilot first. There's no way I would go to the chief and tell him in any way, shape or form that he's, you know, I wanted to make sure this works on the small end and then bring the chief on board. But based on this information and a code enforcement, anybody that wants to talk about this is fine because we're, we're high on it. It's great for our beach stickers. I think it's great for the towns, other towns are adopting it. But obviously, I'm gonna make sure all the other
So I think Eric, did you have something you wanted to say to Eric?
I would just want to talk to Ray about this.
You gotta come up.
You have to come up there.
Yeah, come up to the mic, please.
I would just want to
Good morning.
Good morning.
I don't think it's on, is it on?
Is it on? No.
Speak loud. You're good.
It's on?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I mean, initially, I see a lot of different enforcement issues. I'm a little confused, what exactly is being scanned?
Registration on the vehicle, on the window.
Their, their
Their car registration.
Their car registration, okay. So how does that, how is that integrated? Explain that a little, a little more.
So it's in the software, the software that they call is license plate recognition technology. So that has their license plate attached, their registration. So all the information that they put into this software and apply with their, for their permit is in their cloud-based software. So when that's scanned, it shows if they were purchased or not.
Okay. Alright, so when they purchase this at six a.m. on a Saturday, when are their backup materials confirming that their resident reviewed?
So that's what we would have to figure out, who is on staff getting notifications on. We would just look at the documents, approve it, and then it's done. Once we click approve, they have their permit.
Yeah, so basically what we were gonna do, we would have somebody designated each weekend because it goes straight to our system. So saying that you have somebody purchase stickers. So we'd have somebody on our staff or somebody that's working as a seasonal person on the weekend to verify the information.
Okay.
And to help you with that as well, they are, all the people who purchase it are notified once they submit their application. They do get email confirmation that says, like, you've submitted your application, this is not a parking permit, you have not received, whatever the wordage is, that you have not received your parking permit. Once we click approve, then they get the awesome notification that they have their permit and everything. So they'll have written documentation that they did everything.
Alright, because that was a gap when we did go to the online purchases, that was a gap where people would pay for it and think that they had it and then get a ticket and come to court and
So they do clear that up for us so that people are aware that they don't have a permit unless we approve it. And they're not charged until we approve it.
What we do now with Recpro is that they will, they can purchase it over the weekend, but once we verify, then we mail them out the sticker or they can come pick it up. So that's where the gap is. It could be a two-day gap, it could be by the time they get the sticker after they walk
So they don't have to pick up a physical sticker?
No.
Alright, so the scanner, what it does is it picks up just the license plate number on the registration? Is that
Yeah, so it would scan whatever it gets, whatever numbers of the barcode that comes off of that in the scanner, it would give us the information, like whoever bought this and they have the bronze pass, whatever it says, or no, you don't have a permit.
Okay. I'm envisioning that the TCOs and the police officers will absolutely need the scanner. The only other way to do this would be manually inputting it into
Like a cloud
Just the license plate number into like a box on the cloud, like a, it just, it's, that's the key indicator. So you type in like the search button, type in the license plate number and all the information pops up.
Okay.
On the police computer? This is where I'm getting lost.
So you would just have to use, like in the cloud system, just like the system we use now, you basically click the website and you log into the website.
Okay, so but this would all
And that's our user.
This would, all the police computers would have to have this, the availability
To go on that website, yeah.
Yeah, there is, this system can replace the current system and I did not want to even touch that with the chief until he wanted, he saw it fully and it was working. I don't, there's a name of the system that we use, the Passport identified the name of system, a lot of people use this system. This conceivably can replace that system. So, and it's all cloud-based, so. Yeah, I mean, there's still, there's a little thing, we can always have the, the chief or with Eric, we can have another conference call with the, the team here with any additional questions that they have, just so they're comfortable with us.
Can I have a question? Happy, I know you talked about two towns that are looking to do this, Southampton and Brookhaven. Have you asked this company what towns have already implemented this so you could call those towns?
Brookhaven isn't
Brookhaven isn't
Yeah, they started years ago.
Are they, they starting or are they implementing?
No, they started it a couple of years ago.
Oh, so that's perfect.
So it's fully operational.
It's fully operational thing.
And they have other tiers of it too. So in the future with like, like how Port Jefferson, if you want to go hourly parking, like they use this kind of stuff where you can just do it on the app or your phone and all that kind of stuff. But even prior to the implementation with the police and all that kind of stuff, like Ray said, we've been looking for years of the software ability to just have whoever you are implement all your stuff. Like we said now, Recpro, we're just manipulating the system to make it able to do all of this, but it's not efficient, as efficient as this could be. Or the books with the stickers and the manual time that's consumed by all the employees, where this could just be like cut down on so much time.
This is like an easy pass, the only thing it doesn't do, right? When it scans and if you weren't registered, it automatically generates the file, right? So, yeah.
Well, no, it can.
Can it do that?
If they, if we, if we go with the police on everything, it would be like, I guess the system that the police would write a ticket on and it can print out their ticket right there and they would get a ticket and they could pop, they could pay it on that software. But that would be once we implemented, wait with them.
Well, it'd be the next phase.
Yeah, I would say
Yeah.
So like now, we got some stuff to get through and, and once it's implemented, then we can go down
Yeah, while we have the beach stickers in, because we, we had to order those.
So stickers are gonna be issued to everybody this year?
Yeah.
Stickers are on this, yeah, we already started that. That's why we thought maybe we piloted this summer to go over any kinks before we get rid of the stickers because, you know, we have to order them in October or November the, the year before, so.
They're expensive.
And Ray, what happens when somebody who's been getting a sticker for thirty, forty years and needs that sticker? Sometimes it's hard, you know, when you have seniors to change and go say
You're right.
We're gonna go automated, but I don't have cable, I don't have wifi.
Well, you can still go to the beach and do it. And you can still come to our office and do it. And you can still pay cash. That's one of the things I asked because I know that was a big concern with you last year.
Yeah.
When we said we might go cashless at the beaches. So I had asked him specifically, can it, he goes, yes, we can take cash, we could do it exactly the way we're doing it now at the beach, in the office. And then the main thing, we're gonna, and especially as the generation's coming up, they're all computer and app-based, so that's where we're gonna push the online. So eight percent last year was our online count, so we're trying to increase that every year. But you're right, the seniors is a different thing, but they don't have to do anything. They don't, a lot of complaints we get from people is they don't want to put the sticker on their car.
I don't.
Yeah.
I agree with him.
And then we get people to say, well, I got too many stickers, dah dah dah, so they'll, I'm not sure they'll find something to complain about this too.
Yeah, right.
Right now, if they don't put the sticker on their car, they get fined. It's been, it's been strict liability, so even if you have purchased the sticker, we've taken the position that if you don't have it affixed in the place where it's supposed to be affixed, you're still getting fined a hundred dollars.
Correct, yeah, that does happen a lot.
Unfortunately.
So one other question, I see in, in the picture here, the scanner is fixed to, I don't know if this is a car or a building, are these gonna be hand scanners or at the beaches, will they be fixed on the, on the buildings?
I think this is for that further system when you can do with like the gates and all that stuff. The scanner would be like a handheld, it looks like a cell phone. And they just go like around. And that's how we can let the police know.
I love this, I, and anyway that we can automate this and actually build into the future, I think is really smart. Earlier, I think you mentioned that if somebody even signs up online and that you have the ability to print out a sticker for them. Did I hear you right on that?
No, right now, right now, we have to mail them the sticker. So they can't print anything right now.
No, but what I'm saying is if they sign up on this system
Yeah.
Yeah.
Do you have the ability to print out a sticker like from your office if they wanted one?
No, I think Ray was talking about, I know what you're saying, but I think he meant ticket when we were implementing with the police. But with this, they wouldn't even need a sticker. But if they came to the beach now, since we have the stickers, we'll still give them out. So when they come to the beach, they could just scan, say, okay, here's your sticker. So the police won't be scanning, they could just look. The park beach tenants can still search on the computer. There's tons of ways that we can figure out what they have.
That's why we're happy with the stickers. So this way, if the police don't like it, let's just say it's something they don't like, well, we still have the stickers implemented and they could just tell us, eh, it's not working for us, you know? And then we just continue as we go along. But at the same, we, in a sense, we'd have both systems going this year and just to try it out to see if it works, how it works, what are the kinks?
And they suggested that, sorry, the, the company suggested most people will start like this, go baby steps. We have our stickers. Next year, if the police are like, we don't want, you know, we still want stickers, well, maybe we just get a different special sticker that we just slap, we don't have to write out all this paperwork for, we just put it on, it's a little thing that's like you have your permit.
So just, a lot of other companies have gotten away from like purchasing scanners and all this stuff that we use identification company work in, we've gotten rid of all them and everything is done by the cell phone. Can the Passport, can they set it like just as, where they can actually, a cell phone, you can simply like a QR, reading a QR code, you can read a motor vehicle so that we don't need to buy fifty scanners, a hundred scanners. I mean, can, do they have the ability to download software on your cell phone that any parking attendant can use their own personal phone and just go click and see it and read it?
I don't know the answer to that question. I don't, yeah, it's a great question. I don't think they do, but that question was not asked to them.
I don't think you'd want to use your personal cell phone in the conductive, conducting business. You wouldn't, your phone would be subject to be subpoenaed and I wouldn't want to use my personal phone or something like that.
But we could figure that out. But we could figure that out. I feel that we have laptops for the beach tenants. We can have this locked up securely, where the be, where the police are coming after six o'clock, I just need to get in, do, 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 get in, get the scanner. We don't need seventy, scan for everybody, put it at the locations where they need to be. We can have them at each beach and then want it, an office on either side of town. I'm sure we could work that out to make it more cost-effective.
And to Ken's point, so if they had an iPad that could just, you know, like take, look at a, a barcode, I do like the fact that the police, if this is doable, and I'm sure Brookhaven knows this, they can just type in the license plate number and print out a ticket, so they don't even need a scanner. They're gonna do that anyway, right? They're, you know, as a matter of course.
The parking tickets are all written manually.
Yeah, they're handwritten. Uh, town codes are handwritten.
Right. So, to, to enforce this, the police officers at the TCOs are just going to have to walk around the lot and scan the registration of each car.
Well, they'd have to walk around and check for the sticker too, so.
I mean, right, right now, what they can do is they can drive through the lot and look for the sticker where the sticker's supposed to be and stop, if they don't see it. Um, this is, they're gonna have to physically go to each car and scan each registration, so.
They can ride right through the parking lot and scan each one as they go through. It's faster than getting out and checking each car individually.
It could, could be.
That's why it, it, the pilot portion of it, the stickers are still there.
You can do it by plate number also.
They can, they can try it out this year.
You can do it by plate number, correct?
Yes, you don't have to.
You don't have to get out to scan the registration on the car.
No.
It scans the plate number or you have to physically type in everything?
You get to type in the letter, but once you put like seven, it'll only give you all the sevens. But, yeah, that would take a little bit longer than the scanning, but like Ray said, we're gonna do the stickers still, and, um, in the future, I don't know, it's if they wanna be a part, but the main purpose was to, um, do step one to make things better.
Yeah, let's see what Brookhaven, I would love to know what Brookhaven experience is with this system.
Yeah, no, we're, we're definitely calling. We wanted to see if the town board was interested first, before we took our next step. Uh, then we would go ahead and speak to Brookhaven, and we'll go ahead and speak to Southampton too, to see what experience they're having right now, because they're, they're, I think they're doing the whole boat, Southampton.
Yeah, they wanna do everything they had, the police and everybody, the gates and the whole thing.
Of course they do.
And Eric, Eric, in that, in your meetings?
Yeah, Eric, I, we can set up a call, um, and I'll ask the chief too, if he wants to join. It's a conference call, could do it on Zoom, uh, and then any questions that you have, or the chief may have, uh, they can answer right then and there, and then they can tell us whether they are interested or not in the system, and, uh, yeah, obviously, we want everybody on board with this, because we partner with the police, with the stickers and, uh, the code enforcement, uh, we're always in communication with them. Uh, this will eliminate a lot of that, since everything's just now in the cloud.
Okay.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you for your time.
Have a good day. Anyone else? Hi. This is gonna conclude our discussions for today, and, uh, we have no items for executive session, and, uh, we're gonna have, uh, resolutions read. Good morning.
Good morning. Everybody ready?
Yes.
Resolution number one, approve special event chapter two fifty-five application for the Home Depot plant sale. Resolution number two, classify special permit application of two sixty-five Washington Avenue as a type-two action pursuant to Secra, two sixty-five Washington Avenue, South Jamesport, New York Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash sixty-eight dash three dash twenty-six. Number three, schedules public hearing for the special permit application of two sixty-five Washington Avenue, two sixty-five Washington Avenue, South Jamesport, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map Number six hundred dash sixty-eight dash three dash twenty-six. Number four, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to bidders for dry hydrated lime calcium hydroxide. Number five, awards partial bid for street light and traffic signal maintenance repair parts. Number six, approve special event chapter two fifty-five application for chicken kids, children's consignment sale. Number seven, authorizes the supervisor execution of certification and point of contact information sheet with the Department of Navy loaned aircraft. Number eight, approve special event chapter two fifty-five application for Deshaun J. Briggs Memorial Foundation, Inc., Run for Briggs. Number nine, authorizes application for funding through the U.S. Department of Transportation, raise twenty-twenty-two grant funding. Number ten, ratifies the appointment of a town budget officer, chief of staff, to the town supervisor's office. Number eleven, ratifies the terms and conditions of employment for Dawn Bree, town budget officer. Number twelve, authorizes Lawrence M. Levy DBA Onsite Productions, Nunk Pro Tunk, to provide additional audiovisual production services for the Tana Riverhead Water Forum, two sixteen twenty-two, twenty-twenty-two. Number thirteen, accepts highway superintendent's personnel report and request for town board resolution to appoint a highway labor crew leader. Number fourteen, budget transfer for twenty-twenty-one accounts with negative balances. Number fifteen, authorizes supervisor to execute agreement with Riverhead Lacrosse Club, Inc. for referee umpire services for Tana Riverhead Police Athletic League Girls, Girls Grid K through eight lacrosse program for twenty-twenty-two calendar year. Number sixteen, transfer to general fund A O one from Economic Development Z fourteen. Number seventeen, community development department budget transfer. Number eighteen, budget transfer for settlement of litigation. Number nineteen, encumbers funds from twenty-twenty-one for the water department. Number twenty, authorizes the renaming of Cliff Road, Waiting River, New York.
Finally.
And number twenty-one, a resolution authorizing the Tana Riverhead Community Development Agency, CDA, to make joint application with Calverton Aviation and Technology LLC, CAP, to the Tana Riverhead Industrial Development Agency, IDA, to transfer title to all of the acreage CDA owns at Enterprise Park at Calverton, Epcal, comprising approximately twenty-one hundred acres in order to facilitate the sale and transfer of approximately sixteen forty-three plus or minus acres at Epcal to Calverton Aviation and Technology LLC, CAP, pursuant to a lease and project agreement by and between CAP and IDA, and consistent with terms of the agreement of sale between CDA, Tana Riverhead Town, and CAP dated November nineteen, twenty-eighteen agreement, except as amended and agreed to as set forth and reflected by the terms of this resolution, and letter agreement between CDA Town and CAP, and agreement between CDA and IDA for transfer of the remaining property. Number twenty-two, authorizes amendment number five of agreement with U.S. Department of the Interior, U.S. Geological Survey. Number twenty-three, authorizes the supervisor to execute an agreement with G and G Technologies, Inc. regarding cable cast services. Number twenty-four, appoints a senior water treatment plant operator two B. Number twenty-five, reappoints a provisional senior water treatment plant operator two B. Number twenty-six, approves Thomas Novelli contracting as drain layer for Riverhead Sewer District. Number twenty-seven, ratifies Stotsky Park scoreboard purchase and installation. Number twenty-eight, ratifies authorization for supervisor to execute a professional services agreement with Dr. Martin R. Kanter. Number twenty-nine, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to amend chapter two sixty-three of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Rental Dwelling Units. Number thirty, order calling a public hearing for the increase in improvement of the facilities of the Riverhead Sewer District in the Tana Riverhead Suffolk County, New York. Number thirty-one, authorizes town clerk to publish and post notice to consider a local law to amend chapter two fifty-one of the Riverhead Town Code entitled Noise, Public Nuisances, and Property Maintenance. Number thirty-two, authorizes town clerk to publish and post a public notice of public hearing to consider a proposed local law for amendments to chapter two fifty-five entitled parades, assemblies, and special events of the Riverhead Town Code.
Finally.
And then I think we have.
It's all these years.
If we have an additional resolution, we're gonna add number thirty-three, authorizes the supervisor to enroll in a six-week online certification course.
Thank you, Devin.
Thank you, Devin.
Can we just, I know Bill's not here, but if we can just clarify the negative balance transfers? I guess if it's unused funds from last year and then they're available this year, or? I believe it's like a housekeeping thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's on a, just off, it's being carried over, so it's your non-accounted-for funds, or is it?
Hello.
Good morning.
How are you?
Thank you.
Good morning.
So this is just, um, just like Tim was saying, a housekeeping item, so we're just, uh, through the, the year-end closing process, we go through, reconcile different items and, uh, make some journal entries to make sure that everything is classified properly, so this is just making sure that everything has the correct amount of, um, budget to go home with the expense for the year.
But was it unused funds of last year that carries over?
Nope, it's, so this is an actual twenty-twenty-one, we're going back, excuse me, to last year and adjusting those. So it's not coming over to twenty-twenty-two.
Okay. Just, just reclarif, reclassification of each one, simplify them in counts. Got it. Thank you.
Thank you, have a good day. Anyone else? Thank you, everyone. The work session is now closed. Have a great day, be safe. And again, if you need anything, call the supervisor's office and.
So moved.
Can I have a first and a second to close the meeting?
Second.
All opposed, all in favor, so moved. Thank you.